Good evening, this is the April 11th meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals. We have a request for an extension, appeal number 2017-014. This is their second request for an extension. They're looking for extension until April 27th, 2020. Do we hear a motion?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright there, young lady. You're on.
First appeal is appeal number 2019-010, Patricia Alana, 166 Cliff Road West, Wading River. Tax map number 626-143, RV 80 zoning for variances and or relief from chapter 301, section 29, A1D. We're shed under 144 square feet, nine feet by 10 feet is 3.1 feet from the property line. Minimum required is 10 feet. Section 34, where proposed building area is 22 percent of the lot area and maximum permitted is 20 percent. And where proposed rear yard setback is 25.8 feet and minimum required is 60 feet.
You're gonna lose your coat.
You want me to go over there?
You could sit there if you like, the microphones are on.
Yeah, the mic's on.
Do you have the...
I do, yes. Sorry, I didn't realize I was the first one, I was running a little.
Oh, you're in right on time. You walked in the door and he...
Literally.
Alright, you need to be here this morning.
You gonna swear that you tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth so help you God?
I do. Diana Laspisa with Moreno Expediting Services for Hamilton Court, Coram, New York, 11727. Here on behalf of the property owner, Patricia Alana. And we're requesting permission to construct a sunroom addition off the rear of the existing dwelling. The proposed sunroom will be 12 foot by 20 foot and it will be holding a 25.8 rear yard setback. The sunroom will be unheated and it is going to be flushed with the first floor elevation of the home and projecting off of, let me just see, the dining room. It is something that's just used seasonally. It's not, you know, it's not heated, it's not gonna be open to the rest of the house, but it does, you know, need to hold the setbacks and is considered an addition for zoning purposes, but it really is used more like an accessory structure. I do have some photos of the home, the area where the proposed sunroom is going. And there is a lot of vegetation between the house behind them and the subject property. So during the spring, summer, fall, you know, a lot of the trees are bare right now, but it'll be pretty screened very well from the neighboring property. So I'll submit those up to the board. And then with regards to the shed, there are two sheds on the property. The owner's gonna be removing the larger shed. That is the eight by 12 foot shed because it's not entirely on their property, but they would like to be able to, if possible, maintain the metal shed. It's very old, I don't know exactly how much longer it would last, but when it is, if they did have to relocate it, I'm not sure it would make the move.
Anyone have any questions?
And the existing house, as the board is already aware, doesn't meet the rear yard setback. So any addition necessary would have to be before the board.
And the large shed is gonna be removed?
The eight by 12, yes. And that'll have to be removed prior to them issuing the CO. Like, that'll be a condition of the building permit.
Anybody have anything else to say?
No.
Who's got the reason?
Oh, someone's...
Oh, well then, please, step up. I'm sorry. I apologize.
Should I step away?
No, let him go through. Go to the microphone.
Ladies and gentlemen of the appeal board, oh, sorry?
That's okay, just hold on, you have to be sworn in, hang in there.
Please state your name and address, please.
My name is Sid Wong. Address is Two Berry Lane, Wading River.
Okay, and you swear the testimony you're about to give the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth so help you God?
Yes, I do. Thank you very much for the quiet information and the time for the hearing. Where the, my wife over here, Allison, is, oh, there we are. We own the adjacent dwelling that's behind the home where I believe the sunroom is looking to be raised. So we were here just to listen to what the situation was. I wasn't even aware that there were two sheds, I thought there were one. So I'd like to take this opportunity to issue a formal protest to the variance based off of the fact that it's not in compliance. And also, while there is vegetation in the back, a lot of it did fall down during one of the storms. So we do, you know, have direct visible access to our neighbors. To have them closer or put a space in closer to us, I think, would bring in or raise some issues with enjoyment of our property.
Have you seen the survey?
I have not yet, no. This is the first opportunity.
Why don't you show him the survey? And we're gonna put a condition on the permit for the sunroom to remove the shed that's overlapping that property, which is creating a...
Is that his property?
Yep.
Is the shed overlapping his property?
I don't think so.
I'm sorry?
No?
So, yeah, so that part of that shed, but the owner wasn't aware, she had an order of survey at the time, but subject to the application, we had to get a new survey done. So she realized that the shed was over. You can see it's over onto your property. So that shed is gonna be removed. The shed that we're before the board bore is the nine foot by 10 foot shed, which does meet the rear yard setback to your property line, it's the neighbor to the north, that's what it does mean.
So, can you go back to the mic? If you're comfortable with that, would you be okay with the sunroom then, or are you gonna still object?
No, I'm still gonna object.
And what would that be reason for?
Like I said, it's, we already have plenty of visibility into our neighborhood, even with the vegetation in place, based off of the fallen trees in that area.
So if they put a 12 by 20 sunroom on, you're gonna object to that?
Yes.
Because you can't see anything? You have visibility issues?
Well, I mean, we would be able to see right into the sunroom. I mean, that's not something that would...
You'll be able to see in the sun?
Yeah, we'll definitely be.
Oh, okay.
So you bought of them in the back?
Yes, we do.
How far is your house from your boundary, your rear boundary?
Yeah, it's our side, it's our side of the house, yeah.
What side?
It's the side of our house, yeah.
Yeah, how far is it from the property line? I don't see it.
Which is his property?
I'm not entirely sure there, yeah.
I'm sorry, which, according to the survey, which is your property?
Doyle.
Doyle.
Oh, so your, so their current shed is on your property?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. I stand, yep, just wanted...
So that would be your objection?
That would be, yes.
Okay, thank you.
May I speak?
You may speak.
I mean, there is those pictures were taken, the date that the sign was posted, I believe April 3rd, and there is a lot of vegetation there that when, you know, it, spring hits, the leaves come on and, you know, it would, it would screen it. It's not a very, I don't have an aerial, unfortunately, with me because I didn't think it was necessary. I was just trying to pull up on my phone so I could see where their house is. The sunroom is, you know, when I was in the yard, I couldn't see the neighbors behind them. And I took a picture this way and a picture, so you could get the whole rear yard. But certainly this time of year you can, but this time of year is not when the sunroom's gonna be used. And the height of the sunroom, it's not, you know, like they're looking to build a very large two-story addition. The height of the sunroom is gonna be nine foot four inches. It's, you know, it's a one-story home, it's a small home considering these days, you know, the McMansions people build, they just wanna be able to sit outside, be able to get the feeling of being outside without just...
Do you think your client would be willing to put up a couple of abreviations?
I was gonna recommend...
They wouldn't have any issues of seeing into the room?
I was gonna recommend that. I'm sure, you know, they, they wanna be able to utilize their property. I think a six-foot fence, I don't wanna offer that, that could be slightly expensive because it'd have to be a solid fence, I don't know that...
No, I'm just making a suggestion so that the neighbors feel comfortable.
Well, I think maybe if we were to plan, I think they would be okay with that if they had to plan, I mean, they would do it along their property line, they're not gonna do it along the sunroom otherwise, then they're just looking at trees. But, so, yeah, so I think that they would be open to that. I don't know about necessarily the whole length of the...
Well, certainly we would consider what their visibility issues are.
Yes.
I don't know how many feet of property you would need, but...
Why don't you go back to your clients, I'm sorry.
No, no, that's all right, I was just gonna, I was gonna suggest that we can sketch it on the...
We'd like to see something like...
I'd like to know what the distance is from their property line, the side of the house. Okay, what that distance is?
I can get that, I can...
Pictures don't show any house in those, you know, not even close.
Because you can't see a house. Because I was back there, I took the pictures myself, you can't see the house.
I'd like to see that measurement.
Oh, yeah, no, I can, I could definitely get that. I didn't hear the gentleman's address, would you be able to...
Sure, we'll get a phone.
Okay, I'll ask him on my way.
You meet him in the back.
Okay.
So why don't we...
Sir, how far is your house from, I'm sorry, how far is your house from the property line?
We're not 100 percent sure.
You gotta go to the mic, sir.
We're getting the house re-surveyed, that's it, but...
Yeah.
Yeah, we're not 100 percent sure.
We're not exactly sure what the distance is from the property line, estimate...
So, can I ask you a question? If we're gonna come back here in a couple of weeks? Can you take a picture?
Absolutely.
Out the back of your house, at their house?
No, it's the side.
It's the side of the house.
The side faces their back of the house.
So the side of your house, which is the property formerly Doyle?
Yes.
If you could take a picture...
Well, a couple of us are gonna stop by again, so...
Yeah.
Let's look at it again.
Are there windows on that side?
Are there any windows on that side of the house of yours?
No, but the deck is off the back, basically, but no, there aren't windows.
There are no windows, yep.
Okay.
So the 25.8 feet...
Plus the setback.
So in other words, right now, they're, the back of their house is 27 feet point eight from the property line. I'm sorry, not 27, 37.8 feet from the property line. You're saying that that extra 12 feet is going to affect, affect you?
Yes.
How?
I believe that it would affect us because we'd have visibility into their sunroom and we would prefer not to have that there.
So you already see their house?
Yes, we do.
So you have visibility of the back door?
Yes.
And if they're outside barbecuing, you get to see all that and enjoy that?
The house, yes.
You currently have visibility of them?
Yes, yes.
And you're gonna continue to have visibility of them?
That's correct, yep.
May I ask you a question?
Yes.
Would you be amenable to screening?
We would be, yes.
If they put up some abreviations?
Yeah, I think so.
So maybe we can just put a condition in that, or you wanna work it out with them first?
Well, I'd like to, I'd like to look at an aerial and get the, yes.
Let's get this all written out.
You know, I wanna make sure it's necessary.
We're not back here to do this again.
And also, just to bring to your attention, so if they're in the yard, you know, so I'm assuming you can hear, you know, what they're saying and, you know, see them entertaining, by them being inside the sunroom is actually gonna be less intrusive because they're gonna be more enclosed and they're not gonna be, you know, out, so just pointing that out.
So let's go back to your client, tell him we'd like to see some abreviation?
Yes.
Some kind of screening there.
And I will bring an aerial, if it's possible for them to bring their survey for the next hearing.
Sure, that would be great, yeah. If you could bring a picture too, that would be great, sir.
Yeah, we'll ask them to get it out of there, yep.
Definitely have to stop by. Okay, so anyone else to be heard? That one, okay.
Thank you.
The next meeting is April...
25th. 25th. So I move that appeal number 2019-010 be adjourned to the next meeting, April 26, 2019.
We won't be able to make that meeting, is there a way to provide you some of this information ahead of time?
Let's, let's you two get in the back, get change, phone numbers, and maybe we can get this done.
Sure, that sounds great, thank you.
Alright, terrific.
I mean, we definitely don't wanna, because they are anxious for the sunroom, so we'd...
We'll make a decision absolutely, positively come next meeting, so you have two weeks.
Okay, alright.
Thank you. And you said that's the 25th or 26th?
25th.
Diane?
Diana, yes.
If you could give us that measurement from their house to their...
I'm gonna bring an aerial with the measurement.
Okay.
I'm gonna get his address, yes.
That would be great.
If you could get us ahead of time.
Alright, did I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. Mr. Seabrook?
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire?
Aye.
Mr. Barnes?
Aye.
This is Worthington?
Aye.
And I vote aye, so we'll see those folks in the next meeting. Okay, you can get all the parties in here for the next one.
Appeal number 2019-011, Surs Ventures, 1074 Pulaski Street, Riverhead. Tax map number 60125111, industrial C zoning for variances and or relief from chapter 301, section 123A, where the proposed impervious surface is 68 percent of the lot area, amended from 66 percent in hosting, and maximum permitted is 60 percent.
Okay. You wanna swear a minute, please?
State your name and address, please.
Richard Israel. Business address is 889 Harrison Avenue, Riverhead, New York.
You swear the testimony you're about to give the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth so help you God?
I do.
State your case.
Good evening. Okay, my name is Richard Israel and I am the owner and managing member of Surs Ventures LLC. The subject parcel is known as 1074 Pulaski Street, Riverhead, New York, tax map number Subject property had received a variance on March 23rd, 2017, appeal number 17-16, which granted a variance for 65.8 percent impervious versus the allowed 60 percent. Since that variance, the town planning board has required us to go through a full site plan review process, which we are, hopefully, will be approved soon. During this time, our original variance had expired. I didn't look to renew it at that time because we knew changes were happening to the plan and additional things were being required. There is a question, a correction in our request, which I believe I made the mistake on my part on the application, which is to seek 68 percent instead of the 66 percent on the application. The reason for the additional coverage is that we are building handicap accessible walkways which connect the front building's three and fours parking lots with the parking lots in the rear. We are creating an additional larger dumpster pad to accommodate a 30-yard recycling dumpster, which one of our tenants currently has on the property, and other improvements that have been required by the site plan. The planning board has required additional landscaping, making the complex lighting dark sky compliant, removal of the old exterior oil tanks, which many of these items have already been done and removed. The site is now dark sky compliant and the oil tanks, excuse me, were removed. The variance as the first time that we went through this process is essential to the safety and necessity of good parking for the complex clients. The new hard surface is replacing an existing stone parking area. The new asphalt surface will make this portion of the parking lot a lot easier to maintain and will be striped to designate parking spaces. The current enclosed pen for outside storage will become additional parking. That will be removed from the site plan as, as it exists today. The additional drainage will be created to deal with the additional water that will come off the hard surface. The drainage system will be enlarged. This variance will not create an undesirable change to the character of the neighborhood, it will actually improve the availability and quality of parking. The requested variance is not substantial, the area is currently gravelled, and the additional sidewalk will improve the connection of the existing parking lots. The site is being improved from its existing conditions. The requested variance will not have an adverse impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood as the asphalt will improve drainage of the parking lot and control runoff. The conditions which exist is not self-created as we are just improving the existing parking lot and handicap accessibility on the site. We respectfully ask the board to grant this variance so that this project can finally be completed after two years of planning since its last appeal. We would like to get the improvements completed as soon as possible. Thank you. Any questions from anybody?
Richard, I see that you had, said you made the mistake on the application?
Yeah, I guess it was always 68 because that was on the plan, but I kinda was looking at...
Well, this plan's calling out 66 percent.
This was the other one that I gave you.
Is this a revised one?
Yes.
Okay. So I didn't get the revised one?
I'm sorry. Take a look at the revised one.
Alright, so...
It's hard to calculate because of the existing conditions and this and that, so I know young and young went back and forth and back and forth. At one time, we had propane, there is one tenant that uses propane. We were putting the propane storage in an area which was against the building, and the fire marshal last week said, "It is allowed by code to be against the building, but we would prefer that it be three feet away." And that got us closer to a curb on a parking lot, so we actually have now moved it within a fenced area which, which will not have pavement underneath, in a gravel area next to a air conditioning unit, and it will be screened and buffeted.
I mean, conceptually, I have no issue. I think it's fine. It probably was needed back there. I can imagine what that would be if you were, not having other difficulty.
Well, the parking is needed because of our tendency.
Yes.
You know, we have safari there, we have the gym nation there, and during the winter it was just very difficult for people to park and for us to plow.
Right, I do get that. So, Carissa, did we correct and posted the correct percentage?
I spoke with Dawn about it, it was posted at 66, but for the agenda, it was amended to 68, and she advised to leave the hearing open for another two weeks.
Until?
Until...
You repost it, or you don't feel it's necessary?
I think the question is whether the notice was adequate to give a person interested in the thought that they ought to come, and I think the way it was posted was pretty...
I mean, I agree, 66, 68, it's not a big deal, but...
Anybody who was interested.
The tax pay, and us.
And so we said, "Let's carry it over for another two weeks and make it clear that..."
So that other people have opportunity if they object. I get it.
So we see no problem here, except to give it another two weeks and...
Okay.
You don't have to come back.
We'll grant it tonight, right?
Oh!
I'm gonna give it. I'd like to, but, sorry.
So you don't have to come back, I don't see any problem unless somebody...
We'll do it in two weeks, Richard.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you for your help, as always.
Okay, thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, we're doing a reserve decision?
We're gonna, we're gonna...
I don't know, in case you have...
Oh, repost it?
You have to have hearing, I mean, you have to leave it open so people can object or approve or whatever.
Okay, I see your motion.
So are we, we're...
Anyone else to be heard on that matter? While we're talking about this...
I'm sorry, we're reposting and re-adjourn?
We're just gonna adjourn for people to have the ability to...
Okay.
What's the date?
The 25th is coming.
So I make a motion that we adjourn 19-11 to April 25th?
Second.
Second.
Mr. Seabrook?
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire?
Aye.
This is Worthington?
Aye.
Mr. Seabrook?
Aye.
And I vote aye, so we'll see them in two weeks also.
Seabrook votes twice, I like that. I didn't vote.
I read your mind.
Aye. And he's got two votes at the other end, how'd that happen?
Two seconds, okay.
Appeal number 2019-012, Marion Gilmarten, 631 Pecanic Bay Boulevard, Aquabog, tax map number 687-224, RV 40 zoning for variances and or relief from chapter 301, section 14C, where the proposed conversion of space over detached garage for habitable recreation space is deemed not to be a customary accessory use to principal single-family dwellings.
Alright, do.
Michael came back on behalf of the applicant who is not present, but her architect is in case you wanna ask questions.
Okay, and you swear the testimony you're about to give the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth so help you God?
I do.
State your case.
I would imagine that you have a copy of the, of the drawing of the garage primarily. It had existed for some time as somewhat of a garage shed situation, taken down, replaced in the same perimeter dimensions. The front section of it was taken off, but it represents about a 26 foot across by about 16 foot seven deep. Garage on the first floor with an area above which we propose to be conditioned for the environmentally safe storage of materials, et cetera. If you would look at the, the drawing, that particular section upstairs represents probably the interior about 392 square feet. But because of the way the roof is pitched, on one side, it's a V cup, the bird's mouth basically sits on the other floor, and the other side, it's roughly about a two-foot cripple wall. So essentially, it's intended to have a walkway come out through the back, back entrance there. You really have about a 6'8" height, about seven foot wide roughly, and that's it, after that, it dives off pretty quickly. We would like to be able to condition it, but it certainly isn't habitable, there's no water, there's, there would just be heat and conditioning for safe storage, and there's no real, there's no real headroom for, I think the, the headroom basically at 6'8" represents about 29 percent of the overall interior volume. And I believe that the architect gave you some rendering over there to give you an idea of the fact that it's, it's space for, for storage, habitability would not, not come into any question at all. Unless you're really short.
Do you have a board member, somebody?
No. Will you answer the thing about no gas, no kitchen?
Nothing up there, no, not at all.
Anyone else that have anything to say on this matter?
Do you have any questions of the architect, he's here, he could answer anything.
We ready?
I'm good.
Good, yeah. The architect's on the board, happy with his presentation, so...
We brought him just in case we needed reinforcements, you never know.
Always good to have backup. Alright, who's got it?
I do. Mr. Chairman, I move that appeal number 19-12, Marion Gilmarten of 631 Pecanic Bay Boulevard, Aquabog, tax map number is 687-224, for variance and relief from chapter 301, section 14C, where the proposed conversion of space over a detached garage for habitable recreation space is deemed not to be a customary accessory use to the principal single-family dwellings. Be approved in accordance with the application sketches, with the amendments thereto, if any, as filed with the billings.
Second.
Okay. Mr. Barnes?
Aye.
Mrs. Worthington?
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire?
Aye.
Mr. Seabrook?
Aye.
And I vote aye.
Thank you, always, always a pleasure to see you. Have a good evening.
Thanks very much.
You too, good luck.
Do we hear a motion to accept the minutes of the last meeting?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do we hear a motion to adjourn?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. Mrs. Rothkamp, again, always a pleasure to see you. Have a good road. Have a good road.